Good evening, we'd like to wish you Happy New Year and welcome to the January 8, 2019 USD 500 meeting. Hope everyone had a great holiday and ready to shift gears from fun to more fun. How about that? Ms. Westphal, would you please, actually, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now Ms. Westphal, will you call the roll?
Cheryl Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphreys.
Present.
Brendan Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown and Teague.
Present.
President.
Stacey Aker.
Present.
I'd like now to entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Still moved, second.
Been moved in second, it's the discussion. I saw that we had two.
It's not yours.
It's not that one, okay. And the, I'd like to make a substitute motion, please, to add an item to... Are you sure this is not it? Okay, it's under the same heading. "Consultation with counsel to discuss matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that we will determine the time with possible action to follow." So I made that motion. Need a second, please.
Executive session?
Excuse me?
Under executive session.
Yes.
So you're moving that we have a third executive session?
Correct. So we have a third executive session.
Still moved.
Been moved in second to add a third executive session for consultation with legal counsel. We will determine the time. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Westphal.
And now we need to approve the amended agenda.
So that now we need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the amended agenda. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion passed. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening. So I want to welcome everyone to our first board meeting in 2019. And, you know, it has been, it feels like it's been a while since we've been together.
No, it doesn't.
But it's been a well-rested one.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to leaving, I mean, we, I'll say we, I needed a break. Before leaving on that Saturday, well, that Friday, Saturday, we had, you know, some tragedies that had taken place here. And I don't even want to say that I had the opportunity, but I went to one of our students' funerals. And, you know, one of the things that we have to help people understand that at the age of 15, we should not be having funerals. That's not something that we need to get accustomed to doing.
Right.
And so I want to applaud our social, emotional, Lisa Garcia's department, our guidance counselors, principals, everyone who has a hand in working with our young people and in the day-to-day operations to make sure that what they're doing is, you know, we concentrate a lot on academics and finance, but we often forget about who we're doing this for.
Right.
And so it's very important for us to always understand and keep in the mindset that our kids come first.
Oh, yes.
And so what has happened is that I don't know if our kids know that death is for real and that, you know, there's no coming back from death. And so those were hard. I went to two ceremonies and they were on the same day, and that was probably one of the hardest days that I've had here in Kansas City. Because that was, it was just heavy. It was heavy. And even though we were, you know, the celebrations and just trying to get ourselves to a good spot, it was hard. And so it just lingered with me throughout the vacation. I'll never forget, I mean, I was actually just telling some individuals that I was texting my wife during the ceremony. I usually don't do that, like, in church, that's not something I do. I was just kept telling her, I said, "This is bad." And I know she, well, when we got there, she said, "Your vocabulary is bigger than bad." So I knew if you use your word. But it's like, I couldn't come up with any other language other than, "This is bad."
Yes.
So it took me some time to get myself together over the break, but it was a well-needed, well-rested, well-energized break. And today marks, I think, month five of me being on the job. And so I hit the ground running from the time I got here. And so never got to come up. It was almost like being dumped multiple times. And I was sharing with the cabinet on yesterday about how people forget that, yes, superintendent is, it's a position, but I'm still human. And people tend to forget that you're human. And so, yes, I need to know all of the things that are going on, but still, I'm human. And so just being able to have that vacation time and just rest and, yeah, even though I got a virus over, but it was, that made me rest even more. But I'm back, I'm up and running well, and so I'm ready to rock and roll. And I hope you are ready to go too, because, you know, we have our roller skates on now.
We do, yes.
Well, again, we have to extend our condolences to the families. And while I shift gears at the last meeting, I'm not sure if there was public there, but still, we wish Dr. Strickland and Ms. Dr. Viverels and others that we may have missed retirement, starting on a new path, but that we thank you for your service and always wish you good luck and we will, we will see you. So I always, we said that in December, but wanted to say it again publicly. So, and then wish everybody Happy New Year and we're ready.
Oh, yes.
Other comments?
Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to the central office staff and everyone who is associated with the Kansas City, Kansas School District for your support with me and helping me to be a part of the school board. Coming back from a teacher to a school board member, it's a little bit different. And this is the, what I consider the anniversary of me actually being a board member for one year. And I'm very grateful and thankful for those who have reached out to help me to learn, to grow and develop as a school board member. So I appreciate all of you and I applaud everybody.
I would just like to say I'm excited to be back. I did absolutely nothing except for spoil children for two weeks and I'm ready to go to some more programs and classrooms. And it's, I really, really missed being in the classroom, believe it or not, last two weeks. So I'll be getting my list together for the principals and I'll be out there seeing what we're doing and trying very hard to understand all of it. So I look forward to seeing many of you, well, maybe not many of you, but some of you in the classrooms.
I too. I'm glad to be back. And I just wanted to put a plug in for the Gear Up program. I had the opportunity on December the 18th, along with other board members, to attend their institute graduation. And it was a joyous occasion. It's an excellent program, but I was a little disheartened because all of our seventh and eighth graders in the district are allowed to participate in this program, but we don't have as many people as we should have in this program because they're trying to help the kids get ready for college. There's ACT prep, working on their reading and writing skills, college tours, and they should be turning people away, but we're still trying to figure out, how do we get people to come and get involved in this? And it's free. It doesn't cost you anything but your time. So hopefully, if you know parents out there, encourage them to get involved in the Gear Up program. It's an excellent program. And most of the people who were there were happy, they were satisfied, and they just couldn't believe all the help their young people were getting. And some have some in college now, and they're trying to get their other kids ready. And we should be encouraging everyone to take part in this program because it's going to help our kids for their future. Nothing's guaranteed, but it doesn't hurt to give yourself every opportunity possible. So just a shout-out for Gear Up. Please contact someone at your school. It's in all the middle schools. They need to call, find out where it is, who you need to talk to, and get involved in the program. And it also ties in with Diploma Plus, so they can start in seventh grade and continue to add on. So by the time they graduate, it is possible to come out with a diploma and to also have your associate degree and also have a certificate in something and help you with your ACT scores and so forth and so on. So we want to get our babies involved. And we just got to figure out, if you have ideas, suggestions, let's tell somebody and tell somebody and keep telling somebody that the program is here. We just need to take advantage of it.
Other comments?
I would like to say that our one-year anniversary, yay, that I've learned so much this year. And I look forward to greater is the word or concept for my family is greater. Looking to do greater and more things for 2019. I had an opportunity to talk to a lot or a number of parents over the break, just to talk to them and hear their heart. So it was really good to talk to parents and help share the vision for our school district and encourage them to continue to be plugged in and that we are online available to watch the wonderful videos that are on YouTube after our meeting. So we're continuing to look for ways to continue to help parents plug in, to see what we're doing here and how it actively impacts the school. And over and over again, I heard parents say, "I want to get involved. I want to know more. I want to be a part, but my school doesn't have the extended hours that I need. I work till 5:00, I work till 6:00. So how can I, as a parent, get involved when there's day programs?" So I look forward to continuing that discussion when we have our board retreat and continue to talk to Dr. Faust about what we can do to have parents who are available in the evenings or don't have a standard Monday through Friday schedule become involved in their school and do more for their students. So thank you so much. I look forward to another awesome year.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, today, you know, I had an opportunity to do something a little different. I had two foster boys I had to enroll in school today. And looking at things from a different vantage point, as a parent coming in, it can be kind of intimidating and a little awkward, but it's really, really, it really warmed my heart to get, to have the opportunity for helping, to have someone help me navigate through the process. And two ladies today really took me by the hand and helped me go through the process of enrolling these two foster boys who didn't have, I really didn't have a whole lot of information for them, but they helped me get through the process. And I want to thank you for that. And it was also, it was really special because, you know, as a parent going in, you understand that it is kind of intimidating. And so if we can always be kind and generous and treat people with a little respect, like as I was treated today, goes a long way. So I want to thank you very much for that. And Dr. Strickland, you're going to be missed, you know, and good luck to you. You've been a very vital asset to this school system, and so good luck to you, you know, in your future endeavors.
Okay, thank you. And again, I guess you, what, to tie everything together, we are, as a board, concerned, involved, and will continue to get on the path of the mission and carry, carry it forward. Dr. Faust?
Yes.
School Board Recognition Month.
Yes. So I have a proclamation for the board. We want to celebrate school board. January is school board month. So whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs for all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to the democratic society and ever-changing world, and whereas our school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learning and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas our school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational environment we want for our students, and whereas our school board members are strong advocates for public education, are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district. Now therefore I, Dr. Charles Faust of Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, do hereby proclaim January 2019 as School Board Recognition Month and urge all students, parents, and staff to join in recognizing the dedication and the hard work of our school board members and continue working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of our students today and in the future. I want to thank you so much for the work that you're doing and for you being advocates for students. One of the things that we fail to realize is that you are an advocate for students. And I've said it in several interviews where people expect parents to, you know, come dressed up in a certain way and advocate for their students in a certain way, but parents advocate for students the best way they know how. And it's likewise with board members, you advocate for students the best way you know how. And you are here as volunteers. I think people fail to realize that you volunteer your time and your fight, your push. It's needed. It is needed. So I thank you. I welcome you. Continue to push, continue to push, and always, as I share with the senior cabinet, is to do what's best for kids, always. And I want to thank each and every one of you for the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's so sweet.
Nice. Thank you very much. Very nice.
Oh, thank you. And there's a chance. Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
What would you do without pockets?
And as Ms. Fierce is passing out the certificate, it says, "Certificate appreciation presented to each of us. Grateful appreciation for dedicated service to the youth of this community as a member of the Kansas City, Kansas Public School Boards of Education, January 8, 2019." Thank you, Dr. Faust. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fierce. We're ready for community comment. Our participant is here. Rosalynn Woody, Washington High School. Topic: Renovations of Restrooms at Washington High School. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And to everyone. And I thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Rosalynn Woody and I'm at Washington High School. Do you need my address and phone number also?
No.
Okay. I understand there's a major replumbing project taking place in the district which includes renovation of restrooms. Now, this kind of started, my students asked me about this about two months ago, and I'm just now being able to get on the board and ask the question. So I'm basically looking for facts. It's been rumored that the current restroom layout will be replaced with toilets and individual stalls with locking doors enclosed in floor-to-ceiling walls, therefore allowing anyone, male or female, to use them. Two elementary schools in the North Kansas City School District have these gender-neutral restrooms, and expansion is considered throughout their district. The restrooms have an open area with a common trough sink. I also understand that gender-neutral restrooms in schools are not mandated by federal or state law, but in individual school district decisions. And I want to add a caveat to that, I'm here representing myself, okay? On behalf of my students who have asked me about this, I really didn't know. I kind of, I mentioned to them, "Why don't you have your parents bring it up to a school board meeting or to the administration?" I don't know if they've done that or not, so I haven't heard anything back. But here are my questions. Is it true that the restrooms in USD 500 will be gender-neutral? If so, why? Who initiated the discussion of gender-neutral restrooms? Were parents and teaching staff included in discussions prior to this decision being made? If not, why? If yes, how was this accomplished? And however, I don't recall any communication where Washington staff were informed that this would happen. If parents were notified, did they have any concerns? Were those concerns addressed? And what if a parent doesn't want their son or daughter using a gender-neutral restroom? What's their recourse? And bottom line is, what's the safety or what's in place to protect the safety of students that are using these gender-neutral restrooms? Thank you for providing me the opportunity to bring this matter to your attention.
You can say. Thank you.
So before I can ask Doug to come to the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, board.
Good evening.
Good to see you. Happy New Year.
Good evening to you.
Good to see you too.
We are going to be engaging in the same renovations at Washington High School like we did this past summer at Wyandotte and Sumner. We'll be doing Washington High School over, really, the course of the next two summers. It's really too much for us to take on and get it all done within one summer. We are using, I would call them, privacy stalls. Don't really, I'm not referring to those as gender-neutral. As far as I know, there's really not been any decision to go to a gender-neutral policy. That would be something for the board or for the school administration, in my opinion, to do that. But we are putting in more, there are private, higher privacy stalls, and that's what's in Wyandotte and Sumner right now. But as of right now, we're not planning on taking down the men's and women's signs on the outside of the door. You know, that's a decision that'll have to be made by others. Okay?
Before you leave, are there any questions we want to ask?
No.
Well, then we'll look forward to hearing more on this subject.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for the community comment. Reports to the superintendent.
So, I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, a report from the Behavioral Health Social Work Program submitted by Lisa Garcia, Director of Student Services, and recommended by herself, Charles Faust, School Superintendent.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Board.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, it's our pleasure to be before you this evening to share with you, we were here not that long ago to share our Trauma Informed and Resilient Schools Initiative, and our behavioral health work and program is layered with a network. And I would ask that you accept our Behavioral Health Coordinator, Angela Dunn, to present the work that we've been doing thus far.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Board. Dr. Faust. My name's Angela Dunn, and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I've been in, working in the field of mental health for over 15 years and in Wyandotte County the last 10 years. Now I get to lead the behavioral health work here in this district, and I'm very excited. And I thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. This program is certainly in alignment with the board's priorities to have a safe and respectful learning environment, as well as high expectations. This school year, our district placed behavioral health social workers in 44 schools. There's currently 47 positions, allowing for some schools to have more than one social worker in their building, supporting their students. Initial program development, of course, included interviewing and hiring all of these social workers. I'm so pleased with the level of experience and the depth that we're able to bring to the district with these positions. It also included developing and implementing a referral process, identifying a behavioral health screener to use, as well as building relationships and tracking referrals and progress, making changes quickly if needed to ensure a smooth start. We developed an internal referral link for any staff, teachers, counselors, principals, to refer a student to the social worker. It includes the SABERS, which is the Social, Academic, Emotional, Behavioral Risk Screener. This screener is used nationwide in many different districts and gives us good information about the behavior that we're seeing in our students. The referral form includes six initial questions and then an additional 19 questions that include the SABERS, and takes a staff person approximately two to four minutes to complete. As of January 1st, we received 1,420 referrals for our social workers. Over half of the students referred scored high on, for social concerns. Also, around 700 scored high for academic concerns, and nearly 70% scored high for emotional concerns. Now, many students may have screened high in all three categories. Some of them may have only screened high in one or two. And some students did not have a significant SABER score, indicating that there was something else going on, another reason that someone identified they needed the support of a social worker. Some of the other reasons included trauma, maybe their basic needs were considered unmet, that there was a recent loss of a parent or a caregiver, or maybe that they were new to the foster care system. Once a social worker receives a referral, they meet with a student and do a brief assessment to determine what is needed, if there's additional supports they can put in place, or if a referral to an outside agency is necessary. Social workers, of course, have constant communication with parents to discuss concerns and provide any support that the parents themselves may need. And in some cases, the parents are the identified client or the person needing support, and the social workers can absolutely do that. They do home visits and meet with the parents as often as they need to. Other screeners that we use within the district to help identify next treatment options or best steps is the Pediatric Symptom Checklist, the Patient Health Questionnaire, the UCLA PTSD Index, or the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in people ages 10 to 24 in the United States. So suicide screening in schools is not optional, it's essential. So far this school year, our social workers have completed 228 suicide assessments. Of those assessments, 53 were positive. This means that the student was at imminent risk for ending their life that day. So, social workers either sent them home with a supportive parent and a very strong safety plan, they referred them to the PACES Crisis Clinic for further assessment, if needed, or they directly admitted them to a psychiatric hospital. So while we're supporting students, we're identifying mental health needs and treatment options and referrals, we're also saving lives. We have regular partnership meetings with PACES, the Community Mental Health Center, and KVC Prairie Ridge Hospital. They are very supportive of our work, and we're glad that they are positive partners. In addition to suicide, behavioral health social workers have also supported our counselors during the crisis events this year. And Lisa will provide a brief update on our Crisis Intervention Response Team.
As Dr. Faust indicated, this has been a first semester of a number of incidences that have been certainly traumatic for our youth. And we wanted to share an opportunity to capture that data as a result of our Critical Incident Response Team, which is a culmination of both our school counselors and our social workers. So to date, the number of student contact hours that our crisis team has had to respond is about 900, is 980 hours. We responded to 15 incidences, and of those incidences, they certainly could have been one incident that impacted multiple schools. I do have the data sheet that I would like to provide the board that provides the name of the school, the date, the type of incident, if it was related to a student death, or we had the bus accident with the fatality, the number of hours, the student contact, if there were any, staff contacts, and then we complete a report at the end of each incident so that we have documented what, how we responded, and we provide that incident report to the principal so that they have a follow-up, because we often may be at the school more than one day. So it has been equally as supportive as we talk about saving lives, that we've had the opportunity to increase our Critical Incident Response Team when we're responding to that many number of incidences for that many hours that are required. And of course, working on strengthening how we provide that support after the Critical Incident Response Team has to leave the school. Typically, we're there one to three days and then looking at how we can strengthen, how we support staff, students, and parents following a critical incident response. So at the end of our presentation, I'll make sure to distribute the data so that you can have that in front of you.
So having these new social workers and this added layer of support is wonderful, but it's new. And so we wanted to put practices in place to ensure that all the professionals are communicating regularly. Behavioral health teams have been established at each school, and they're meeting regularly. This might include counselors, social workers, principals, nurses, and sometimes outside agencies, if they're coming to the school to work with our students. Counselors and behavioral health social workers also receive professional development Counselors and behavioral health social workers also receive professional development together. This strengthens that team approach and ensures that both disciplines are receiving the same information at the same time. And then behavioral health social workers meet with their colleagues in small group cohorts for case consultation and targeted learning specific to the elementary, middle, or high school levels that they're working with. I look forward to answering any questions the Board might have.
Questions?
So, one, thank you for everything that you're doing, as well as increasing the communication. What can parents do to become more knowledgeable about what's going on? I know there was a meeting with students regarding suicide, because I have children in the district. But is there any additional information or paperwork or resource that we can use as parents or community to help parents understand the warning signs? I didn't know suicide was recognized. But what are the warning signs? Or how can parents just be more aware of how to talk to a child or someone who knows someone who's going through that?
Absolutely. It's so important that when we know better, we do better, right? And I do believe that our parents want to have all the information needed. So the social workers, as I mentioned, are really building those relationships with parents and educating them. Some of them even had, they've held parent resource fairs where different professionals in the community come in and talk about risk factors and suicide. And there's also an event coming up, February 20th, where Dr. Shayla Sullivan from Children's Mercy, who is a huge pioneer in suicide prevention, will be coming and doing a free presentation to our parents. She'll be providing free gun locks, as well as safety lock boxes for medication or sharps, things like that, that children might use to harm themselves. And she will talk about the risks of suicide as other, as well as other mental health symptoms at that event. But it's absolutely needed, more awareness and more communication about those signs.
When you say they're talking to parents, in what venue? I mean, how is, all parents of the district or?
Yeah, so the event will be promoted and will certainly have registration so that she knows how much materials to bring and how many lock boxes to bring. But we'll be promoting that event and be able to have a sign up link for parents to register.
Where will it be held?
It'll be here in Central Office, downstairs.
I had a question, and please forgive me. Two questions, please. Have you, have you found, and it's only been six months, give or take, gaps in the services and have you addressed that?
Sure, absolutely. When we identify mental health needs, we have to do something about it, right? And so I think the gap that we're seeing is just that extended service. Some parents, for a variety of reasons, stigma being one of them, are resistant to seeking outside help. And so when that happens, when we identify that a child has a mental illness, but the family is resistant to seeking outside services, then we do our best to provide resources for them at the school level. Our social workers are trained, licensed, master's level social workers. So they have experience in working with behavioral health, and they can do basic coping skills, anxiety management, processing through depression. They can do that at school if the parent doesn't want resources outside of school. So we are working through that, but I think it is a gap. I mean, transportation barriers, there's lots of challenges to getting students to outside providers. And I think if there's any gap, that's what we're identifying when we're working with students with those needs.
And will you have, provide those, those insight into gaps? How perhaps budgeting, when we go through budgeting?
And to actually add to that, there are actually even more gaps than we were talking about. Lisa and I have had the conversation prior to the break and actually after the break. We also have gaps with our adults. So our adults don't actually know how to recognize the emotions, and they may look at it as being defiant. And so we categorize it differently. And so what she and I had spoken about is training. In other districts where I've worked, we've trained teams of teachers at school. So it would be an administrator, counselor, social worker, just teams of people who can recognize specifics. And so it just doesn't fall on one person, because if you think about it, if we look at a high school, we have 1,000 kids. And that teacher or that social worker may not come in contact with that one child. And so, but that there, it stretches its arms out. And so our goal is to train individuals and have a crisis intervention team, for lack of better terms, who can help support, not to be the expert, but to be able to help identify. And sometimes, you know, they may start to, because in the beginning, they'll refer everything they see, but then it'll get better, and they may not, but it's the trained officials who are supposed to help decide whether or not. So yes, we are looking, but, and it's much needed. As she stated, suicide is huge. And of course, we sit and we think like, well, what could cause a child to want to take their lives? And like, a lot of times, that's not for us to actually even see. We may never be able to come up with that, but people do it. And we don't always know what that trigger is. And so we have to help individuals. As I was stating, you know, sometimes we, when students, when there's a crisis, we are taught in the educational world, you know, push through, go, let's go with the next lesson. And go, but sometimes we have to stop the lesson and actually face it, talk about it. And sometimes there's not a question or anything, but just letting students know that it's okay, that we understand that you are having an issue and just doing a global, general, and having a safe place for certain kids. But we are definitely working on plans of how.
Part of that plan, Dr. Faust, will include, we presented in November the grant we received from the Windout Health Foundation. Our Trauma Informed Coordinator will begin next Monday, and we are already planning for our first cohort. I've been working and receiving guidance from Dr. Faust. And the very area that we can identify as a weakness that we need to strengthen is providing training for our teachers, our classroom environment. And so I am looking forward to being able to have an audience of teachers. And our first cohort of training will begin at the end of July. And that opportunity has been funded by the Windout Health Foundation. And so we are working right now and layering in that, all of that in our initiative, our behavioral health teams, our behavioral health coordinator, so that we can begin making sure that every staff member in our district receives the trauma-informed training, teachers, support staff, office staff. And we're looking forward to that first training and reporting back to you the milestones of our grant in the early fall of next year.
And one last thing I need to add to share, because you may hear. Lisa's been instructed that if individuals, because a lot of people do, a lot of organizations do counseling, and they want to come into the schools. But I've shared with her, if it does not align with the vision, the task of what we're doing, it's okay for them to do it in the community. We don't want to turn, because students don't just live in the schools. We have a specific order that we want to make sure that kids are being reached. All kids are getting, all schools are getting the same type of training. And, but individuals can definitely work in the community. We're not turning any way away from the community, but definitely pointing them to community facilities of where they can work. Because we, it's a team effort. It just may not be under the same umbrella. Well, it is under the same umbrella, but it's just not be attached to what we're doing. But we're not turning them away and saying they can't work with us. We're just saying, if it doesn't align to it, we're gonna have to pass on that one. But sharing that they can work in the community with kids.
I had a question. I wanted to know, how can we help parents with bullying? You know, we get a lot of phone calls, because if someone didn't see it, it doesn't mean that it didn't happen. And we're in that catch 22 all the time, because everyone has rights. And if I can't get a witness, then I'm not gonna say it didn't happen, but you're trying to reassure them. Because someone didn't see it, it doesn't mean that it didn't happen. And now we gotta work to work this out. And these, some are real rough when it comes to cyberbullying and all the different things that are going on, and parents need information on how to deal with it. And if you guys had anything, are you gonna deal with that? And I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Garcia for helping me when I had some parents who had some problems. And it really has helped them, and I'm just praying that everything continues to work out. And I appreciate what you all did to help. And sometimes we don't say thank you enough, but I wanted to say that publicly, because they needed some help, and you guys stepped up and helped. But there's still a lot out there are trying to deal with this whole issue of bullying. And it's, it gets, because I know as a teacher, I didn't see it. And I'm asking, well, did anyone see it? And everybody, snitches get stitches, nobody talked. They're quiet as mice, as mice. And you're trying to figure out, come on, we gotta figure out what happened. We gotta help each other, we gotta support each other. So how do we help them deal with that issue? And I didn't know if you had something you were doing with that.
Well, we do have our coordinator, our social emotional coordinator, who focuses on strengthening our curriculum that we use to address the skills needed, really to develop resiliency, to be a problem solver, to identify and develop a strong reporting system. And so we are recognizing areas that we certainly need to strengthen to support our students, but also to develop the resiliency that students need to help mitigate some of those issues. It's not dismissing that it didn't happen, but it's recognizing how do we work through those issues when conflict does happen. There are very issues that could overlap between conflict resolution and incidences of bullying. So it goes back to informing and educating our parents and our students, but also our staff, which we have not have an opportunity to be in front of, meaning teachers. And so I'm hoping that when we think about Indicator Four, Conditions for Learning, and work through developing and strengthening what the classroom environment looks like, will help to address some of those issues. It won't be just one thing as we think about trauma-informed and resilient schools and social emotional development. It'll be all of those things layered together collectively. So not just the student services team, but at the building level as well, and building the capacity within our students to understand what it means to report when a student is being targeted. And how do we begin to address that so that they trust it will be addressed, and we're supporting their leadership as well in the building? And we know that will take time, and we hope that we continue to have an opportunity to present our progress and milestones along the way. If you wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think just one-on-one then, when it is impacting the student, our social workers are then working with the rest of the school to develop safety plans if needed, or whatever else the student needs on an individual basis to get through the school day and to be able to function and focus in class.
I have a question. Will you have a working relationship with PACES or Coal Valley Hospital?
Absolutely. We have a very strong relationship with both entities. We've had a strong partnership with PACES for many years. I've worked at PACES and would come here as a community partner. And actually, about four years ago, developed a school-based therapy program, just recognizing that many of these students weren't getting to the Mental Health Center where I worked. So that collaboration has been in place for a long time. And then KBC Hospital is absolutely supportive. We've been partners with them on many projects, including the Trauma and Resilient School Initiative that we're hiring the position for, so they're both very strong partners.
We also have a partnership with Vibrant Health with Patrick Salee. They also provide behavioral health support. And today Angela and I met with St. Francis. So our goal collectively is to develop a menu of options for our parents so that they can identify the best fit for them. It's just not a one-size-fits-all. How do we connect them to resources that they feel comfortable going to to support their son or their daughter?
So clarification really quick. If we do get a report of bullying of a parent contacting us, do we, do you want us to send it directly to Lisa? Or what is, what would our role be if we received that email or?
Administration.
Of the school, okay. That's the first line of defense that we send them to. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing. It was very informative. Generationally, we, from my standpoint, parents took care of everything. And we see now that we're in an age where that is not necessarily always the thing that's being done. And for you to present a report like this, it was excellent. And it was just the, that we're on the right path, getting ready to move to a higher level. And again, I just wanted to say thank you personally.
If I understand what you've been talking about, we need more training for all the staff so that they can be responsive to our students. Is that gonna include the Chief Horns people? Because I believe a year or two ago, they had some training for the police officers on how to deal with teenagers and stuff, because it's different than adults. The teenage brain is very different. And I just think it's very important that we allow Chief Horn also to have those trainings, either in conjunction with yours or ones that he thinks fits his staff best. Because they're a very vital part of our students' experience.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. They are involved in our very high acute crisis situations. And I had the opportunity to talk with the department. I think it was my first week here probably. But just to talk a little bit about trauma and about suicide and let them know how our social workers would be utilized in those situations. So I think, yes, absolutely, ongoing training will be on the table for them, and we'll work closely together.
Well, let's comment, what is the mechanism that you use? You said of these 1,500 students that receive referrals, but that they, once, students may, may ding in multiple concerns. What's the mechanism that you have?
It's the SABERS. I have a copy of it, if any of you would like to see it, I made some copies. It's the Social, Emotional, Academic, and Behavioral Risk Screener. And I included it just with our other screeners that we use, in case you're interested in looking through those. But it's an evidence-based screener, and there's a lot of research on it. And as I mentioned, it's used in many different districts across the country. Even entire districts will use it to help gauge what areas their students might be struggling in the most.
So, but what happens? I mean, so I score high in three areas, so what happens then?
Then the social worker does their assessment, and they meet with a student to determine why did they score high? It has, is something happening at home, is something happening at school? Has there been a change in their behavior? Is there a learning issue that maybe they need a, you know, sped consult? So they're really doing an assessment then to look at, how did they score? And what are the concerns that caused that score to be in the, in the high range?
And after when you asked a very important question, you asked about identifying areas that we need to strengthen. And our school counselors have been a tremendous supporter of our students. But one area that we have not been able to complete is the assessment. And our licensed master social workers are able to help address and fill that gap by completing the screener and the assessment. That's their licensed clinical background, that's what they went to school for. So our counselors continue to meet tier-one needs and provide social emotional support, peer mediation, academic support. But when you get to the why and what do we do now? That's the critical role that our behavioral health social workers play, because they're able to administer the SABERS, they're able to then do their assessment post the SABERS so that they can determine what needs they need to ensure the safety or well-being of a student. And that is so critical as we want to be able to address the follow-up, like what happens next. So we are very grateful to the Board that we have these positions filled and that we're able now to meet the next step and help parents and help meet the need at the school and intervene sooner rather than later. And so we want to thank you as well by helping to fill these positions so we can meet the needs and the number of referrals that are happening. And this is, of course, only just first semester. I anticipate that these numbers will grow as we're working to strengthen this program. But that was one critical piece that we were missing. So counselors would have to refer out, and we were missing what was happening after the referral out. And now we're meeting the needs immediately at the school.
All schools are covered.
All schools are covered. Yes, thank you.
What does C I, C I R T?
That's our Critical Incident Response Team. So that's our crisis team that responds to any incidents of an accident. If there was an accident at school or death is typically why we respond.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I know the, there may be people in the audience, go ahead. There may be people in the audience who feel that we've taken too much time to discuss this subject, but this is super serious, and lives are at stake. So we appreciate it, and we will, we'll continue to put this in a top priority category.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm gonna give it back.
Do you have to accept anything?
No, that's for information.
Go.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the purchase of Edulastic License for grades three through 12 in the amount of $39,679.80 as submitted by Alan King interim Assistant Superintendent, as recommended by myself, Charles Faust.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Dr. Faust, members of the Board, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Dr. Faust and Dr. Strickland asked that we look for a product that provides teachers with the ability to test students electronically. teachers with the ability to test students electronically around our standards. The requirements were that the, there is an existing database of, of test items in English and math, or Language Arts and Math, rather, as well as the ability for teachers to create their own items, and that those items can be shared across buildings, across teachers and across the buildings. We looked at three different products, and we found all the products to be quite similar, although not identical. They were very, they were quite similar. The, um, product that we landed on is called Edge Elastic, and one of the major reasons for it was that the, uh, Edge Elastic, first of all, we have access to that for all of our elementary classes from grades three through five, because it was part of the package that came with our Eureka Math program. They, the database that they gave us access to is, um, from a group called Engage New York. They're the ones who won the Race to the Top Fund several years ago and created the items and created a lot of the resources for addressing the standards. And it's something that they've made public, they were required to make it public by law with the, with the funds. So a lot of these database companies have jumped on those and added those. So they, they have those. So we, we're using those, we're using those currently in grades three through five, as well as, earlier in the year, it was purchased by three of our middle schools have been using it. Everyone who has used it has been quite happy with the product. And what we're, based on that, we're asking that you approve this purchase. This will be for all students in grades three through twelve, and it will be mainly on, the, the databases exist for Language Arts and for math. However, it can be used for other content areas. They are, you have the usual products such as multiple choice, true, false, those kind of questions, but also has the ability to, and for students to answer, or with full text. And then teachers are able to use a rubric to score that. So in other words, they're looking at, for, for different parts. As it would with any type of text, they use a, a rubric to score. They're able to do that through the product. It also has text-to-speech, which means it can be read through the computer, the, the parts that are in there, it can be read to the students. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
How will the training occur for this?
It is online, and we will do it as, as folks need it. We won't, we don't, we wanna go to people as a ray to use it and implement it. We don't wanna pull everybody together and use a, one session for it. But that's the way a lot of places wanna do it, they wanna bring an outside person and take teachers out of the classroom for the day. We don't wanna do that. We wanna work with them on their own, on a one-to-one, or in, in, uh, small learning communities, from what they can learn to do it and develop them.
So when it was wrote, do you know how it was rolled out in Eisenhower, Arrowhead, and Argentine?
I, I do not know exactly what they did.
Okay. My only concern would be that we effectively roll it out to where teachers are using it and understand how to use it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sometimes we will adopt a new technology, but that transition period isn't long enough for them to feel comfortable with it, um, and feel confident to actually use it to make sure it's working, because we can get software, and it could be great, but if our teachers are not using it, are taught how to effectively use it, then it goes to waste. I just wanted to see, um, if there was some kind of way we can ensure that teachers will be comfortable in using it, buying into, to this new thing that we're introducing to them, and effectively have time to use it, because it takes time for them to create a test, to implement it, to do all of those steps. So just wanted to know if those particulars have been thought about.
If you look at research, when you're implementing anything new in this way, and it usually takes more than six months for an effective implementation. So we, we'll be working with folks along the way, um, and providing whatever support is necessary. What we have found is that teachers who use it and really like it, they're the best ones for helping others. They naturally are one-on-one. People tend to learn best as they need it. So we can give them the idea of what it's about, and they can learn it, but they, but when they're ready to use it, that's when the best time to do that, and a lot of one-on-one work does that, makes that effective.
Mr. King, you mentioned the text-to-speech. Is that gonna be an advantage for some of the students that are auditory learners that can't function quite as well when they're doing tests that are written, or they have to have someone read to them? Would this be a substitute for that?
Um, it's, I'm not sure if it could be, but there, there's a possibility of that. I am not sure, and I don't wanna put, uh, Mr. Rand on the spot, 'cause I'm not sure about state assessment, about how it is, if it's automatic or if someone can read to it. But this, this product actually provides the opportunity for it to be read to them.
And one of the things we have to also consider is if, if a person does have those, we have to make sure that it's aligned with their IEP goals.
Right.
And so not everyone gets a read aloud.
Right.
To, even though if they are having comprehension issues, if it's not in their IEP, um, we, we don't wanna offer that. And then they get to a state assessment, it's not read to them, and then it's given us, um, pseudo-data.
So this could help the kids, though, that have an IEP where they have to have the verbal?
Yes. In addition, um, Mr. King also, part of his department is our ICs, and so they meet every Friday. So what we would envision is that our ICs would also be, um, experts on this. And so when he's talking about small groups, they will be able to roll this out, um, because it's really not a, um, a difficult program to, to pick up. But ICs, and then we've also, um, we've also shared with them that any time that we roll out something, we make sure that our school leaders have just that thirty-thousand-foot, um, landscape of what it looks like and how it goes. So we'll do a quick, um, rollout with our principals so they'll know. And then, um, our ICs can definitely take charge, because they assist in instructional, um, training for our teachers. So it's not like they'll, the teacher would not have support, um, but there will be people on, on the ground who can support them with it.
So when would this be implemented?
My question.
For instance, so what would it, just as a, um, a higher level, i- if we approve this, then it's roll out, then teachers do it, or is it like, or could you help me with the timeframe of all of that?
Yeah, I can't, I can't give you an exact timeframe, but, you know, after it's approved, then we have to, you know, put in the requisition and get the order, and once they've received the PO, and they're good with it, then we would have access to it, and then it would be up to us, because it's an online system. It would be, it would be coming relatively quick. I'd say within a month, everybody would have the access.
Okay, so that's, that's February, March. Now, the, the school year ends pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So this is a one-year, so what, you know, what is the plan? I mean, help me understand, you said, did three schools pilot it or something?
They, they requested it, and so we've been taking time to see what they learned. So it, it was, it wasn't an organized pilot.
They're using it now.
They're using it now.
Okay, so how have you trained those teachers, and what success have you, you had from that use?
We actually didn't train them. We, they went through the process themselves with the training, with, from the company. And they have, the ones that we have talked to have felt very successful with it.
So do you have any results, hard data to show that there was some success?
Um, I don't have anything with me right here that would tell you, but I could get some for you if you would like.
So, Doctor, if you could join him at the, I need you to join him to the mic, 'cause our schools are using it.
What schools are using it?
Argentine, Arrowhead, and...
Eisenhower.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Good evening and happy new year.
Good evening.
Um, first of all, let me say that Edge Elastic, there's a free part. There's a, many of our teachers already use an Edge Elastic, because there's a free part of the program that they can use. And what the teachers are needing now are some of the extra things that, that have craft, the Common Assessment, as, uh, Mr. King has shared. And what has happened, as Dr. Faust has stated, that our ICs get together, and they look at the standards within the pacing guide, and they work with, uh, teachers and PLCs to develop the Common Assessments. And so now our teachers are kinda used to it. Uh, so this will help expedite some of their time, so that they can spend their time really in the instructional part. And as you stated, it's very difficult to come up with a Common Assessment, because you have to come up with the distractors and all of those types of things. So this is one way to expedite, uh, the teacher's use of using authentic and, uh, really targeted a Common Assessment to hit those, um, standards that will help us be successful on our CAP assessments. So.
So we purchased now, it takes a month, so, so March, you get it maybe, right?
Well, we would probably get it before Mar- so what typically happens?
You have one month to use it.
But one, one of the things I think we're missing is, um, we have nothing right now. And so remember, we are one of the lowest-performing school districts in the state. And so there's nothing, and so we're asking teachers to write Common Assessments. And so, um, the, the role of turnaround work means that we have to find things in it, and it won't happen overnight. I promise you, that won't, the, it's, we won't be able to turn it overnight. Um, but what we have to be able to do is support our teachers in making sure that, um, that they are hitting the mark. And so when they're writing the assessments, not saying that they can't write them, but they're written at a lower level, um, but what this allows is it writes the standard at the level that it was intended to be written. And so, yes, let's say we are able to get the PO in tomorrow, um, all they're gonna do is say, yes, they give us the, um, the licenses, and then we upload and...
So we planning on working through the summer, tran-, you know, teaching, continuing? I mean, one year, we're, we're kinda like in the middle of nowhere.
Right. So one year, so we'd have through January of, next, it would be continuous, um, and again...
So roughly one semester, the end of, end of this spring, and actually fall semester, will it be, will all be ready to use it? I mean, is that the plan, or, I mean, what I heard you say is kinda like, well, randomly here, if you're comfortable, you know, if, if we're gonna turn around, that's not working.
Right, yes.
It's randomly, if, if you're comfortable or not, there's got to be, I mean, your explanation from the, some of the others, that there was no training with the Eureka Mac or whatever.
Yeah, right, right.
So I mean, I mean, forty thousand is not a lot in the scheme of education and success. But we're saying, I mean, but, but I guess what I'm asking is for clarity.
Right.
You know, what, what, you're gonna say if there's nothing, then we get nothing. And that's where we are now.
Right.
But we're trying to, you know, we're trying to dig out this hole.
Right, exactly. So I...
With at least a shovel.
So it's, excuse me, so I don't believe that, um, it will be an option.
It's not.
This is not an option for people not to not use it.
Okay.
Um, what we're wanting to do is that this is in your toolbox. So this is another option for you to use. Um, what we are doing...
You gotta know how to use it.
Right. So we will, individuals will know, as I was stating, our ICs will be the individuals who will be the experts, and our principals will be the, for lack of better words, the, um, making sure. Because we do look at data. We do look at it. Principals are held responsible for it. They are accountable for that data. They have to come with, on Thursday, they're coming with their second semester, um, plan, and what does it look like? Um, so it's not that it's not an option, and so we're looking, principals are actually looking for something. What is it that they have? Because right now, honestly, we don't have, what, all we have is what the state is offering us, and those are benchmarks, um, or interims, assessments that they give us. But these are, after we get the assessment, so for instance, let's say we get an assessment, assessment comes in, and we know that it's a, a standard that we're weak in. All we have at this point is a teacher who can possibly, one may be able to write a good test item, but this one, you can go in and pull the standard, and actually, so if I have six standards that my students are weak in, I can reteach it and reassess them on that standard and get a, a, a better picture, because that's one of the things we will be talking about in our principals meeting on Thursday, is what's your reteach plan look like?
I just wanna add that many of our ICs are well-aware of this program, and they'll be able to help each other. So once we get it, it'll go very quickly. I have seen the improvement in those three schools since interim number one and interim number two. There's an increase. So it, it will work, and it will expedite time. And there are other benefits of using that program also, because they have little modules inside of there for teachers to see on different ways to teach. So it's very helpful. It will become a great resource.
Other questions, comments?
Is it possible, I, I hear what you're saying, but for some nasirs, if you had some data to show on these three schools and to help document?
We have that available. I just don't have it tonight.
Oh, okay.
We have it from, uh, interim number one to interim number two. We can see a, a difference from, if, remember, Level One and Level Two and Level Three? There are more students moving this way. So we have less in Level One, a little more in Level Two, and we're growing in Number Three. And then, guess what? Level Four is happening. So, in those three schools. Other schools are finding success too, but I know about those schools.
And one of the things that we have started is that having principals visit other schools as a requirement. Um, so, um, Argentine is one that they, I mean, he's really great with his data and how to go back and do the reteaching plan. And so, you know, I think someone said it, once you know better, you do better.
Yes, sir.
Um, and so that's what we're, we're looking at. And so it's, it's changing the culture.
It's okay.
And so it, it's, it's different, um, but it's good, because what we're doing, again, as I stated, is that we have to look out for what's best for our kids, so it will not be an option. It's not an option for them not to use it.
Other questions, comments? All right, so you're looking for a motion to approve the purchase?
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Edge Elastic's licenses for our school district.
Second.
And move it in seconded discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay. Motion passed. Thank you very much, and we look forward to, uh, discussing this topic again, perhaps soon in January. We will have some conversation of, about success.
This is first time.
I, I don't, I understand that. Number C, item C. Dr. Faust?
Um, I asked that the Kent City Board of Education discuss and select a lease option for temporary storage for space for items previously stored at the Shop Hut, as submitted by Lenore Mill- Miller, Executive Director of Operations, Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties, and as recommended by myself, Charles Faust, Superintendent of Schools.
Could you, um, clearly and concisely describe each lease, so that we can then determine which you're going to accept?
The lease, I suppose we have it up there. Sorry, I haven't looked at it for a while, so. The lease for the Osage property is for, if I remember correctly, five thousand square feet of space that is within a much larger open warehouse area. Uh, we would have to find some way to secure our property within that warehouse space. But it's all inside, but it's open to whoever's in that building, you know? The other property is the Stanyon property.
No, could you go a little bit more in-depth? The amount of the rent, the conditions of the, the lease, um, do you need access to that? Can you give, provide him?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, do you have it?
And let me, let me explain, for some of the newer board members, uh, this time last year would have been January, so maybe, and, and Ms. Jones and Ms. Humphries, if the month is incorrect, as well as Mr. Gohin, um, either, either November or October, November, we had this conversation about needing lease space, storage space. So we purchased as a warehouse. And at that time, the conversation was that it would provide all the storage we needed. And so, um, for, for explanation now for our newer members, it's like, what, we're at a, at a conversation, we need storage? Um, so this is, this is, is within the context of that. So, so, so you're suggesting to us that we, we know the reason why, um, and this is gonna be for one year, hopefully?
Yes.
Okay.
As needed until a new facility is, uh, available to us.
But that, you, but that you're not gonna come back again and say, we need more?
Right.
Hopefully.
Right. The property, the Cheyenne property, the warehouse that you're talking about, that specifically was to replace what we refer to as the storeroom, which was adjacent on the same property. It was a, a, a warehouse facility where the district stored, uh, paper goods, other It was a, a warehouse facility where the district stored paper goods, other custodial goods, this sort of thing, really a warehouse storeroom type thing. It was adjacent to the Nutritional Services All One Building. This facility that we're talking about is the, the hut, it was a hut complex. There was actually an old Quonset hut down there at a hundred, or at Eighteenth Street if you're familiar, and then a newer, I don't even know how old it was, newer Butler Building, if you will. These are the items that we're referring to as, there we go, as the hut.
But the point of my conversation is that we're at a point now, you're asking for more storage, excuse me, storage facility.
Correct.
When, when we were presented a year ago that we would need any more storage because we were buying a warehouse.
Okay.
So perhaps that reflects lack of, of, of understanding of our needs at that time or whatever, but we're here at this position now.
Right.
And, and this is a cost that may not have been expected. Sure wasn't presented to us when we said buy the warehouse. So, but you're saying we're, we're looking for a year?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. To replace the hut complex. And so the first property here that we're talking about is the property on.
Fourteen thirteen Osage.
Right. Lenore, you have, is this on the same?
Two thousand a month. Good evening.
I might add that the conversation that, that you mentioned about we were here at one point and then we had to come back.
Yeah.
And I think that transition was during the time that we were making the plans for Northwest, when we thought we could build on the, the property and then those plans changed.
Right.
Which caused us to come back with a second need.
Right.
Okay.
And that's why I just said we need to have, that needs to be clear because, you know, the, the manner in which we were asked to purchase eleven twelve Cheyenne.
Yes, Cheyenne, yes.
Got it. And these individuals are not aware of that.
Very true.
Not these, minus the two that were here.
Right.
Nope.
Okay. So this, this specific property at fourteen thirteen Osage, like I said, is a, within a very large open warehouse. There is another user in there right now. I've been told it's a hotel that's under renovation, so they have all their furniture stored in containers inside this same warehouse. So we talked to the agent about carving out a five thousand square foot area that we would just have to rope off or something, say, this is our space to put our belongings. We would have to secure those somehow within tho, that area. That rent is for two thousand a month, includes, there's not a separate bill for utilities or anything, that's just all inclusive, two thousand dollars a month. They do want a two thousand dollar deposit. All right. They do want us to have, which is a good idea, and frankly, I'd have to talk to the insurance people about the insurance requirement there to protect our belongings. This would be a month to month, could be a month to month lease.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be locked in for an unnecessarily long period of time. Landlord responsible for all maintenance and repair. Well, I'm seeing that on item number nine though, yet, but actually, when I talk to the agent, we'd have to get him to amend item number nine. It says that tenants' costs be responsible for all utilities and services. But when I spoke with him, those were included in that cost.
Okay.
Any other particular?
And you don't plan to store any hazardous substances?
I'm not planning on storing any hazardous materials, no, no.
Number twelve. And what seemed a little, no, well, and the landlord pays the taxes.
Right.
As we go through, any other questions that the members have on this first lease?
No.
We'll note that item number eighteen, no storage outside of this building. Like I said, it's a very large.
Right. Right.
Just as a matter of information, what kind of stuff are we storing?
We are storing what we had down in the hut. We had just miscellaneous equipment. We would put our, we have two Skidsteer Bobcat type pieces of equipment. So we would probably store those down there out of the elements if we can and then go get them with our trailers, which would also be stored down there. We have, actually, there was a truck that we would normally store down in the hut and go get it and use that periodically, one of our landscaping vehicles. We also had, and this is the kind of thing that we might want to put outside, we, we do try to salvage materials when we take buildings down, so we had pallets of brick and glazed tile and this sort of thing. So when we go in to make it repair, we've got that material down there. So that would be something that we would store in that, that building.
Any other questions about this lease?
No.
Okay. Second lease.
That's the Stanyon. Yeah, that's the one that I always, find your mouse. There it was.
I appreciate taking the time, but again, as board members, the responsibility, we should know what we're authorizing.
I appreciate it, sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so this is what I refer to as the Stanyon property. The actual address is, yeah, touch screen.
Twenty forty South Forty Fifth.
There you go. Thank you very much. This is actually part of, we discussed it the last time, the, what was the old Frito-Lay Distribution Center, that property, I don't know what the ownership of it is, but Stanyon Electric is in now. Stanyon is one of our vendors, longstanding vendor. There's a building in the back, since they don't use it like Frito-Lay was using that, it's the old mechanic's shop, it's where they would maintain their vehicles. And I say old, it's actually a very nice building. It's not huge by any stretch of the imagination, about fifty by fifty. But then they also included in the lease is a one acre of land outside of that property. The entire property is fenced. So we would store the more valuable items, the Skidsteers, maybe the backhoe, that sort of thing, inside the facility and, and put some of the other items outside again. We'd have to secure that, although it's a fence. I do see a positive that the building itself, we would have access to that building and only us, you know, versus the other one where it's open and we have to secure everything. This property.
Twenty eighty.
The.
Two thousand eighty a month.
Leasing amount, I'm sorry?
Rent?
Yeah, the rent, I was scrolling down there. Two hundred and, excuse me, two thousand eighty dollars per month, plus an additional two hundred and fifty for the exterior parking, the one acre parking area. And then there was an amount of.
Utilities.
Yeah, utilities.
For the, two hundred and fifty dollars for utilities.
Mm-hmm.
And for parking.
I'm curious, what is your preference?
You know, like I say, there's pluses and minuses, pros and cons. The, the one property, everything's inside, out of the weather. We'll have to squeeze to get everything in five thousand square feet. Some of these items, the trailers, as long as we can secure them, I'd be okay with putting those outside. The Bobcats, the Tobacco's, I'd like to have that inside. You know, so I like the fact that you can put some of those inside the, this, either property, but the other is just, it, I, I feel like it's maybe a little more secure. I can't really say that.
What's the footage of the property twenty forty South Forty Fifth of the enclosed garage?
Just about twenty five hundred square feet.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say five thousand. That was the other.
Five thousand, the other one.
The other, correct.
So inside, it's about half, but then we've got the full acre fenced yard basically outside. Yeah.
And there's something in the parking lot, snow, smoke, snow removal, trash and snow removal, right? Let me see, page two, sponsor trash cleaning and an event wants trash service or snow removal.
So we'd have to, we'd have to pile our own snow, which we do anyway, you know? We'd have to do that to go get our machinery.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions about this second lease?
Well, at the Cheyenne place, do we have to do, no, mostly everything would be inside. Would we have to do anything for snow removal on the outside? I didn't see that in there, but I didn't know.
For the Osage property?
Of, of Sage.
For the Osage property? Yeah, you know, that actually would be a question I'd probably take back to the agent because we did not discuss that. My assumption would be that they're, you know, they've got to, they've got to get into their building too, you know? But again, that's one of those things that if we need to, if we, we've got the equipment to do that, so.
Would there be any additional fee for securing our portion if we did the first one?
Potentially, yes, depending on how we wanted to sure, secure that. If we wanted to, I didn't discuss with him, maybe putting a temporary fence up inside, something like that, we could do something like that, but it would be an additional fee that we would have to pay for that. We did not discuss that.
So are you prepared?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion for lease one of the properties.
Madam President, I suggest we purchase the property at fourteen thirteen.
Lease, lease.
Lease the property, thank you. Lease the property at fourteen thirteen Osage.
Second.
And move it in second, the lease option, temporary storage for shop equipment, fourteen thirteen Osage, moved in second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passed.
Thank you very much. May I make a correction to something I said earlier?
Mm-hmm.
Not about this.
Okay.
About, about the stalls, the restroom stalls. We actually, I found out this morning, the, the Sumner stalls were supposed to have been installed over the holiday break. Apparently there was some delivery issue, so that, that is still work ongoing. I told J E Dunn, they've got to get me a schedule to get that done. We've been waiting too long for those stalls, so I just wanted you to, I said that we hadn't changed those stalls at Sumner and winded out. Fact is, we're still working on getting those stalls put in at Sumner. I wanted to make sure that I.
The restaurant by the gym.
All of them.
All of them.
Yeah.
So we'll look forward to the second meeting of a fully vetted discussion of, of date of.
Yep, right.
Thank you.
But I didn't want you to think I was misleading. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent, are there any other items?
No, no other items.
Okay. We now come to the consent agenda and I would like to set aside item D, the H R report. Any other items, A through, well, A through M, that any members would like to set aside? Hearing none, then take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item D.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus item D.
They're second.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve this consent agenda minus item D. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion passed. I just have a question and I have to ask Mr. Goheen. If I ask a question that is a specific item, does that violate any privacy?
Depends on what you're going to ask.
And you don't know?
And I don't know. But if it's a generic question about, assumed by specific item, you mean a specific numbered individual?
Correct.
Without knowing what you're going to ask, I don't know the answer to the question. If it's a.
It has people's names.
Right.
Not, it's not the employment, it's not the upper numbers.
It's the lower ones.
Lower numbers.
Can you ask your question without asking about a specific individual?
I'm not asking, well, let me ask it anyway. And, and I don't want to violate anything, rules. On the H R report, number thirty six. Is everyone there?
Mm-hmm.
I know that we had to address some deficiencies in our kind of special ed training. Are you on the same page with me, same track with me? No, not, not number thirty six, but thirty six, but you, Mr. Goheen and.
Yes.
Superintendent. So does this English Language Arts, Arts Cadre work? Does it fall under the training that the district was asked to provide?
I don't know the answer to that for sure, but I suspect not.
I can, I can speak to that. What that group is, is they're working to tweak and read, and work out the G V C for English Language Arts for Secondary, Middle School and High School. So it has nothing to do, it's, it's our act of wanting to update and make sure things are meeting the level of the standards. It has nothing to do with any requirements from anyone else. It's our own, it's a rewriting of our, it's no different than, let's see, another item that is like, that is like item thirty seven. That's for elementary math. We bring groups of teachers and instructional coaches and sometimes principals together. So we have voice from everyone as we rewrite the G V Cs.
So every, every teacher kind of goes through this or are these lead teachers?
No, these are, these are just teachers who have, either we have asked them or they have volunteered to be part of this. So they're actually writing part of the curriculum.
I may have other questions for you, Mr. Goheen and Mr. King. So with that in mind, I would move to accept the Human Resource Report and Recommendations, reserving the right to ask for the questions. Okay. Been moved, I need a second, please. Been moved in second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Payment of bills.
I move that we pay.
Excuse me, motion passed, forgot. Payment of bills.
I move, I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Been moved in second that we pay our bills. Discussion. Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion passed. Boardwork session.
Dr. Man, I have a couple of questions and Dr. Faust thought this might be a good time for me to ask them.
Are they related to number eight?
No, they are about enrollment.
Bow.
About enrollment. It's coming up. A couple of questions I have to ask Dr. Strickland and Alan King.
Okay, so this is eight A?
I was just wondering, women.
How is this categorized?
I mean, I guess it's, it's not really part of that agenda item, I don't think, but I guess you could move to amend or add an agenda item.
We are past that.
We do that a little earlier next time because we asked for, if you want to add to, it doesn't look right to go through all of this and now we're going to add stuff to it.
Is it something that would fit in the board discussion, item ten?
It could if Dr. Strickland and Mr. King are here.
Okay.
That would seem the logical place for it at this.
Okay.
With your permission?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, but we will get to it.
We'll do it then.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just trying to stay consistent with our agenda, but in the future, add it as a, amend the, or, or, or let us know it's going to be there. Okay, thank you. And I think we're now at eight. Boardwork session, priorities, parameters for the nineteen twenty budget.
Good evening, board.
Good evening. Glad to see you.
Thank you. Before the meeting started, I had handed you a, just a handout. This were your, these were your board priorities for this year and actually for seventeen, eighteen as well. And so that was kind of the start of our budget planning process. Dr. Faust just wanted me to give this to you, these, so you, so you know what you had for this year. If you wanted to change anything or amend anything, we were going to talk about it more at the special retreat on the twenty sixth. We use. We usually, within these priorities, we then set our parameters, you know, kind of what you wanted to do. Like we hired the social workers this year and planned for raises and that sort of thing. So those are kind of parameters within these priorities. So do you have any further questions? We're planning to do more about that at that retreat.
No, thank you.
Well, thank you, and we're looking, but, excuse me.
I would like to make sure this time when we do budget, that we really have what's in the budget, because we kept getting stuff coming up and surprises. We were told one amount, that's it, there's nothing else. And then money keeps coming up out of the air. So can we be clear and make sure we all understand and really have a real budget that says what we really have and not to come up with surprises down the road? Because when the teachers come to us, we're saying, oh, no, no, this is what we're told, this is it. And then here's some more money being spent. And we're like, well, I don't know, I'll have to ask.
You're referring to, because you had the whole budget documents.
No, I don't think we did. Now, we could debate that, but I won't do that now. I don't think we had, we saw the entire thing. We saw pieces of it, because it was never really clear.
Okay, we can talk, I mean, you have, you received it with the, because you received the whole thing that occurred into the state and everything else. But we'll go over the budget with, with you.
And I think what happens is, individuals may think, it doesn't read like a regular checking account. I think that's weird, because there are pockets of money from federal, pockets from state. But what we can do is make sure when we are doing our budget priorities and we have, I think I'm in A. Dr. Meckel, they can come from the state board, and they can talk about it from the state, what it should look like. So it'll help and it'll be an unbiased person who can give you insight on what the school budget, the school district's budget will look like, because it won't read as.
Simple as our home budget.
Yeah, because we can only spend what, what's approved in there. But what I think will happen is, and that can be something that we can talk about, about when Doug comes and what do we want him to address so he can get a full picture? And so that it doesn't feel as though someone didn't share information. But a lot of it, you have to know which budget code to look under in order to find it. And so there are hundreds, I may even say thousands of budget codes. And so it's almost like Prago, it's in there. You just have to know where to look for it.
Yeah, and let me add, and I think to follow up with that, and I'm not speaking for you because I'm, I don't know what, I'm not in your brain. But along that same line, it's kind of like just digging a little deeper in some of the line items, because we had a line item that said, school supplies 2 million. And so within that 2 million.
We can certainly break those out, because those were for each school. Those are coming from each school's budget.
Right. And so when then we were looking for insurance for, I'll call it shooter insurance. It's not the proper name.
Active shooter.
Active shooter insurance. But when we were, had to spend it, the question was, where would we find it? And our, our person said, well, we had some surplus in light bulbs and furniture, which we wouldn't have known, there was some surplus in light bulbs and furniture. And it wasn't light bulbs, but it was furniture. So that's, I think, am I correct, what you're saying? Just we need to unravel, we're going to take more time to unravel. And this is a new experience for, for staff, because we had not had that experience as board members since, until last year.
And we had to give it back. That was the other caveat, is although we did get the books, we were told you have to give them back. So.
The first time, yeah, for sure.
The first time, yeah. Because it was still in process.
Right. And so that kind of made, because we didn't have enough time to review everything, we'd just say, hey, okay, here you go, give it back, here you go. So I think that would help.
So we, Dr. Faust, what, what, what's, what I'm saying, and I'm going to speak for myself, is that this process is, is long involved, but at the end of the day, you know, we only have so much money. And so we may or may not get that amount of money. But that we do, we do want to know how we're spending and when then we're confronted with those, those costs that we don't anticipate. We have a little bit more insight as far as we're getting the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you soon. So we come to the part of our meeting, and we will stay here, so we appreciate your attendance this evening. But on number nine, executive session, A, need a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with legal counsel to discuss matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under Kansas Open Meetings Act. How long are we going to take for the first?
6:45.
Okay. We will, I need a motion for the board recess into executive session at 6:45, which will give, wait a minute, which will give, thank you, our audience, time to leave and our board members time to get prepared and for consultation. And, and that means we, the board will return at 7:00, regular session, with possible action to follow.
Not on this one, although we do need to make sure Doug's included.
With no action to follow, thank you.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, moved in second session, 6:45. Return at 7:00 with no action to follow. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, nay? Motion passed.